Okay.
We're there.
Okay.
I will call us to order at five thirty. Holy smokes, Verizon Standard Time. Get us all on time and stuff. Reception of guests, he says, without irony. We'll move right to agenda revisions. Anything?
Um, I need to add something to, um, to this, and it's under the action agenda, so maybe you just want to leave it there. But is the number of membership, and I sent it to you in email for the Act forty-nine Articles Committee, it will be three people. And we can talk more about, if you want to just talk about there, that works for me. I just wanted to make sure.
Public comments and correspondence, we can skip right over. Approve the minutes of November nineteenth, page two. Take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November nineteenth.
I was second.
Is there any discussion of the minutes?
Not specifically of these minutes, but, um, as you saw the email from Ellen today, um, could, is there, I know-
Confess, I have not responded to her yet.
Uh, I didn't have a chance.
It's fixed.
It's fixed, yeah.
Okay. Did anybody reply to her, just to say it's fixed?
I did, I did.
Oh, thank you.
I did reply to her.
It didn't come to me, maybe she had it.
Okay.
Did you reply to her too? No, I did.
No, I just forwarded it and thought these should go to Alicia if it's, but they don't.
I didn't see that, you didn't, were included.
She's not on the list of people it goes to.
She didn't even, she included one person, she didn't include anyone but the board.
Right.
Instead of going to the person that has the problem.
Yeah.
Your reply might want to suggest that-
There has been a problem with getting minutes up there in a timely manner.
Right, but you're still-
Well, I think there was a, it was a misunderstanding a couple of months ago, but I know that they have-
That's been, that was addressed, yeah.
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 Okay.
I just, yeah, kinda wanted to make sure we recovered there.
Alrighty, I have a motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Repose, abstain. Budget draft number two, page four.
So, um, this is, nothing has really changed in this budget draft.
Hey Dave.
The, you'll see the net impact for taxes is still about the same. There's been a little adjustment in the Washington Central assessments. I think it went from one nine six to one nine two. And then there are two considerations at the bottom that Alicia are gonna talk to. But before we get to that, if there's any questions above it, I'd be glad to, we, I should say, we would be glad to have them. But really, that part-
Three credit graduate course with Dave Melnick, starting in January, that's happening here in this building. Where I know, over the course of the next few months, we're gonna learn a whole lot more about what we need to do for these kids. That we just, I don't have the answers today, but know that there's this void in what we're offering children in trauma. And we need to do it better.
So what do you need from us?
So-
Sorry.
So the piece, the piece I would say is that, uh, um, you know, we brought you these two pieces to know, uh, we're, you know, Alicia's and the, and our team here is trying to solve the, solve these issues, what resources for kids. We can't give a pinpoint detail on like, how much time is it gonna take. I, I think I'm gonna take Steve's thunder and say, you know, do we have a fully sketched out pan, plan? We don't. We found out about a month ago from Nancy Thomas, who's a trustee, and we all know Nancy well. Trustee over at Plainfield Healthcare, they just were awarded this federal grant to expand their services. Really great, we'll always be glad to partner with folks, so that's really exciting. But this is where we're at, and it's part of the frustration of the budget building system. You know, we're building a budget for six to eight months from now.
Right.
For actuation, so that's, um, the best we can give you. We know that, we know that the kids' needs have increased, and the number of kids have increased. So, can we, it's hard to quantify that into an FTE for a type of service.
Right.
It is, and you'd say, that seems like it shouldn't be that hard, but it is. It's really hard, 'cause you don't know, when you have a kid who needs support, is it gonna be a couple hours of support? Is it a couple days of support? Is it weeks of support? Is it, you know, it just, it, it can ebb and flow, even within the same kid, in the same family. It's just, what are the triggers? So, those are the pieces. You know, and Alicia's great about building models and building plans, so it's, you know, and she needs more time with this. I think she was trying to tell you, she needs more time with her team to figure this out.
I think last month was to give you an awareness. This month I have more information and more details. But I also feel like it would be hasty for me to say this is what we need, because I don't know that. What I can also tell you, since writing this report, I just looked. We had four new students, we now have six new students since a month ago, and they are all students who, um, come with some sort of life crisis, either homeless, um, trauma. Pretty significant issues, DCF custody. And that, that's just been in the last three weeks. We've had six new students move in. So it's a very real thing in this school right now. And-
I mean, this goes back to something that we've talked about a couple of times, where not by design, but by default, the school has become the social safety net.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
I mean, that's-
The public education system has never been charged with outside of the school stabilization of families, but we recognize that in order to be able to effectively deliver education, we have to do that. So, in, in my mind, um, I understand that we can't put an FTE to it. And I understand that we can sort of put some wavy figures toward it. The question that comes to my mind is, how can we call this out? Right? So we, we talked pretty directly about, um, tier-two supports, and how we're going to do this thing that we know is right for students. And we gave it a name, tier-two support, that we could sort of talk about. And, and it, it sort of disassociated the service from who was doing it or what FTEs. And I think that was positive. I think that meant that we could talk about, um, that program, almost.
Intervention, yeah.
Right? That, that inter, exactly, thank you. That, um, and, and measure its effectiveness, effectiveness, sort of a little more objectively. So I wonder if this is something that falls into a similar bucket, right? It's not tier-two, or tier-one, or tier-three, but, but this is, you know, this is social services. And I think, first of all, I, I think it's positive, I'm overstaying my talking stick, but, but I think having some sort of a, of bucket that it sort of falls under, that we can say, we're doing this thing that is outside of the official charge of a public education system because we need to do it, is an important piece maybe to call out to a certain degree.
What is Elizabeth Zucktina? I don't have my little form on my computer.
She's a one-point-O.
So full-time nurse.
But you were also saying that there is a need for Mary Beth to be here longer.
I think alongside of this work, we need to look at the role of guidance counselor.
Yeah.
So what she does in this building, she, in my opinion, and I think probably anyone who watches her's opinion is she's stretched way too thin. She teaches guidance classes. She sees children individually and in small groups. And she's part of teams for kids who are in crisis. Doing that in two and a half days a week for over two hundred kids is, is becoming harder and harder. So what we, we've done is we've whittled away her guidance class teaching time, so she can see kids. But then she's, by doing that, she's not proactively in the classrooms as often as other guidance counselors are. So, you know, there's this kind of push and pull on where she's needed and, and how to use her resources, which she's an incredible resource. You know, times when a child, she spends every, every recess and that she's here, out on the playground, navigating social situations with kids, trying to help them talk through issues. But when she's only here two out of the five days, a lot happens in those other three days. So it's that kind of thing where, um, a lot goes on in the time that she's not here. And then Michael and I are filling in for that role, which we can certainly be bodies to fill in, but we don't have the skill set or expertise. So we're putting Band-Aids on. I'll meet with, you know, kids in crisis, he'll meet with kids in crisis. We'll take lots of notes, we'll talk to families. And then when she comes in, we kind of dump on her, um, everything she's missed in the time that she was out. I'm sure it, it's an overwhelming feeling when we dump, but it needs, I mean, she's the one with the skillset and the expertise to do that. And it's not that we, you know, can't talk to children when they're in crisis. We absolutely can, but we don't have the same-
Background.
No, we don't. And she's given us great tips along the way, or she shared with us, you know, in this situation with these kids, this is what you can say, this is what you can do, this is how you can handle it. I know in other buildings, the guidance counselor is mostly used for, um, doing investigations and doing all of that. And that's nothing that she did, she can't do any of that, you know, and we have Michael to do that. So it's this, like, what is the role of guidance counselor? Looks really different in every one of our buildings. Berlin School has a full-time, we share with Callis because it's, you know, and they have just over a hundred kids, and we have well over two hundred, and, you know, and she's doing jobs over there that she doesn't do here, because it's, there's just no continuity.
And what would, what's the, what would be the difference between a guidance professional and a social worker? What would the social worker do differently than what she would do? Or a guidance professional?
I think it really depends on how you structure either of those positions. In my mind, I see a school social worker doing a lot more outreach with families. And, and being that liaison between the school and the home. So we have, we, a lot of times for kids in crisis, have what's called an Act two forty-six or Coordinated Services Plan meeting, where we call in professionals from DCF and Washington County Mental Health, because we don't have, we, we don't go into the homes, but they can. A school social worker would do more of that. You know, so I don't know, is it part-time guidance, like what we have, and keep that going, and part-time social worker to fill in the, the holes? And I feel like I'm not the best one to tell you at this point what that should look like. I feel like it needs to come from all of the staff and those who work with these families and kids every day, including Mary Beth. And just because it was so, you know, such a short turnaround, we just haven't-
Yeah, I would say, I mean, I'd push you on the social worker, because I've been in places where we had a school social worker. And for kids that are in the highest degrees of support, it really helped to have that flexibility as a social worker than a guidance counselor.
To go into, to go into the home.
To go into the homes, work with the families.
Yeah.
It really, it really made a difference there more. But, you know, as, as Alicia said to me, she said, well, Mary Beth works with families too. And I said, I know, it's hard to really define where that line is. Um, but it's a, um, you know, it, it's that piece of, um, I think both look at the whole family along with the kid. I think the guidance counselor's a little bit more focused on, they're both focused on the kid. I think the guidance counselor's more an academic, where the social worker's more of that social behavioral, being ready, where the family supports around it. But it, it's really amorphous, it's really hard to say there's a clear line.
What's in place in other schools in the district?
We don't have any social workers.
Even at U thirty-two now?
No. Well, we have one there for, uh, that supports the SAP work, uh, for point six of the day.
SAP?
Safe and, it's more, um, it's more for drug and alcohol.
Okay.
Sorry, I lost the accent.
Substance abuse.
Prevention.
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 I couldn't get it either, I was on social.
Guidance counselors on a different pay scale than teachers?
No, they're on the same as teachers.
So a full-time guidance, guidance counselor costs a hundred thousand dollars?
Can if the benefits are separate, and the education levels are right, and the benefit experience are right. We have, we have some personnel that are teachers that cost a hundred and five thousand dollars in this issue.
Not their salary, their benefit.
So is there, Mary Beth is right now half-time, Callis half-time, us. So she doesn't really have more, does she have more time? She doesn't have more time.
She is a per, she, in her current state, no.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, you'd be reducing.
And I've not had that conversation with her either.
Yeah.
You know, um, Callis is in a similar situation to what we're in, which is, um-
Well, I, I've seen her in action, like, you know, and sometimes for me, even on Wednesdays, when you have to, or at least when Herb and I used to be here at the same time, like that Wednesday when she was not here, it was where we needed her the most, you know, like even just to ask something, or whatever was, was happening. So, and I know even from my own chat, she was really resourceful, and she didn't have the, the, the time. So I, you know, I, you know, I would be on the mindset, and I know that we're not trying to come up with a solution tonight, but to try to investigate that and possibly end up with, uh, full-time if possible right now, even though, because we don't know what the future is for us. This is just, right, it's something that we were gonna have to negotiate as a larger district, so be, sort of try to be a herd of the curb on that, and then try to use the Plainfield, you know, Plainfield has, you know, that's the, all of the migrant workers, you know, that's what Plainfield, uh, communities, the Plainfield Health Center does too. You know, like, so they have the ability to do all of those health-
Right.
parts that, that they need. And we know that this is one of the biggest things for our, we're trying to work on an achievement gap. So I agree with what Ruben was saying, this could be seen as an intervention. So getting more time of Mary Beth, or whatever it is, could be added to a-
Tier-two investigation with the big federal grant.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's happening regardless.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I guess my question is, if, you know, I mean, the timing is adorable, as you were saying.
It is what it is.
And what would have, I mean, and I've never been, I, I haven't been in this position, so forgive my ignorance, but if we said, for the budget, wanted to make sure there was room for per, uh, an FTE, could we, and then the Plainfield thing worked out so that we actually didn't need any, could we, and so we put out to the town the budget, best we know that we might, we'll, we'll need this.
So that happens every year, this is just on a bigger scale.
Right.
There are estimates that are in the budget all over the place.
So it's not, not unheard of to do.
I think, I'm sort of stealing Steve's for a point, which is that we don't tell you how. So, I, I mean, it's, it's useful to have an understanding of what is going into your decision-making process, but I don't, I don't think we're here to tell you, yes, do it this way, or yes, do it that way. I think the real question is, are we willing to put fifty or seventy thousand dollars toward some better, um, for lack of a better way to put it, sort of wraparound supports for families that are in crisis.
And I've been quiet. I have no intention of voting for more money. None.
None.
So I, I don't really need to participate in the discussion. I would say our administrators have the ability to create a full-time position with the buzzard that they're proposed. They would have to eliminate some things to do that. We're not preventing them from doing that. And that coupled with the possibility of what might happen with the Plainfield Health Center, I don't, I don't want to allocate money. And saying, and I don't want to allocate, I mean, floor, we could get more. And in the next three weeks, I mean, that's a volatile population. In the next three weeks, eight could leave, and we would have fewer. May not be the trend, but it's a, it's a volatile population of students, and they're apt to move a lot.
Yeah, but I, I think that the guy, that's why I was focusing more on the guidance council, because I think we, we can do, she already meets with families, like, we can, we can do better. You, even if she, let's say those six students move out and we don't need that, the trauma. She's, there's still work to be done in the building that she is not getting done right now, because she's so split up. The only reason I bring it up right now, because I'm not gonna tell you how to do it, is that she can't, she doesn't, even as a real person, she's already half and half. So this is a much bigger conversation. If we are gonna attempt to hire somebody, there's two schools, you know, she's gonna have to decide which school she wants to go, and then the other school has to find somebody. So if we don't give you clear guidance, in, if we're willing to add or not add more to the budget, it would be, to me, hard. And as I see the budget right now, I don't know where, I know that she can be very creative, but I don't think that we are providing, I see it as an intervention. I don't think we're providing the services that, and, we, we are, we're doing a good job, but I think we could be doing more with the guy, like, working more with the, for example, the, I can't even remember what, uh, mindset, mindfulness. Like, she, she doesn't have as much time as she had before to do this mindfulness work with the kids. It's just like, it's incredibly important for, and, and that's something that can be taught to the families, you know, like, it-
To the teachers, they're taking the course, they're going to be much better.
And she can spend more time coaching, is, I see her almost as a coaching position in the school too, with the teachers. You know, there's some teachers that are much better with kids in trauma than others, and they've been working on, on, on this.
Yeah, we, we definitely are as a staff.
As a staff.
Building our toolkits around everyone, around kids in trauma. It's something we've needed to do when we're, we are.
But mindfulness is like, it's for everybody, it's not just for the kids.
So maybe Ruben and I can give you some contextual information from across the district.
Yeah.
This may help you with this, or not help you with this decision.
Okay.
I'm not sure which way I will go. Each of you take a packet I sorted for you. There's a, there's a eight, one of these is in your, in your, uh, in your packet, but it's just easier to look at on an eight by fourteen instead of eight and a half by eleven. The first one I'll go to is the one that's the eight by fourteen, which is the fu, budget function for this current year by school. You've seen this in prior years. You'll notice if you look under the E MES, um, column, to the right of that are percentages. So that's the Eastmont Pillar Elementary School's percentage as function of the budget. So the instructional services are a total of one point four million, or thirty-six percent of the budget. Now, that's not all the instructional services, but that's, but there. And the cost per equalized pupil for Eastmont Pillar, I'm just teaching you how to, reminding you how to read this, is nine, is seven thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars. So just understand that you might, I, I should, after this was printed, I realized again, every year, I should put solid black lines that go right down the big E MES, and right next to the Romney column, because all of that is E MESs. So I just wanted you to see what three columns are your schools, and then you can look across. So up top-
Where is the seven thousand again, Bill, sorry?
Right, under, if you look, go thirty-six, okay? So tho, if you take the large column that's Romney to the left of it, and to the left of the E MES, that large column, that line, those borders, and kind of made some bold lines there. So up top, we've got some demographic data for you. We've got what your enrollment is, pre-K through twelve, as of October first. The next one is the ADM. The next one's the big number for tax rates, and that's equalized pupils. Okay? It's one ninety-three point eight for this year. Then we get into square footage, and number of meals per day, and pre-reduced lunch, and sped count, and enrollment of pre-K students. What we did was go down through, and bl, these are the major functions of the budget. And if it's yellow, it's low for across the district, like, you have a yellow for your guidance services. You have the lowest cost per equalized pupil. And then the high, there's a high one there for, which one? Debt service. So, okay?
Why?
But if it's green, if it's yellow, it doesn't mean it's next, because it's the low, it doesn't mean you're necessarily good, and if it's green, it doesn't mean you're bad. Just, it's a way, you want to look relative across. And one of the things that I said to another board last week was, hey, what is ours compared to the relative across? And, you know, if it's, if it's like, hey, ours is lower high, but it's only like five percent difference than the relative range, it's not that bad. Uh, we were looking one at Romney, like, the pair educator cost was fifty percent more than any other school in the district. So, you know, it started to go, oh, well, we should maybe ask some questions about that. So this is really a tool to ask questions about. And, and you use to kind of look at where are you as a school. And then down below are some other information divided by other devisers besides equalized pupils. So for operation plant, we do it by square foot. And then we include in the capital fund, then the capital fund in debt. And then we have the food service support per meal per day. And then we add pre-K per pre-K enrolled, and special education cost per sped. And student transportation, that, that's really not much different. It's a very small range, from like six seventy-three to six ninety-four, so the range is really tiny. There's some rows here we didn't put greens and yellows on, because their SU assessments going across, and they're done by equalized pupils already. So I give you this as points of information, um, for this year. But I want to take you to the other sheet, and I'm sorry I'm going fast, but the other sheet, I think, really kind of breaks it down for this current year and next year's budget that you just talked about. So if you want to take this sheet that's right here, if I'm going too fast, stop me. Good? Okay. So the top here is a whole bunch of information, and this really gets you to tax rates. So your total expense budget for the EM, for E MES this year is three point nine million? I'm literally gonna read down this with you, because I, I think it actually makes it easier for understanding tax rates. The offsetting revenues that, before you calculate for taxes, are a hundred and eighty-three thousand. So the total local ed spending, which is the numerator, and getting to a cost per pupil, equalized pupil, is three point eight million. You have a, this year, you have a hundred and ninety-three point eight equalized pupils, which gives you a cost per equalized pupil of nineteen thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars. The next two figures are there, if you were to receive any federal funds, you don't. You have some indirect things through the supervisory unions, like Title II and services that we bring in there, but we didn't calculate that in. Any questions about how we got to a cost per equalized pupil? Because that cost per equalized pupil is what drives your tax rate. And because we're in a dollar yield now, your tax rate is a dollar ninety-six. Equalized education spending tax rate before CLA. Okay? I'll tell you what it is later on down below. So the budget you have in front of you without either of those positions, this is from draft one budget, so it's a little bit higher, but you were one point nine six before, you're at one point nine two, is four point zero six million. The offsetting revenues for the budget you have in front of you, that, from draft one, was a hundred and seventy-two thousand. So that gets you to a local ed spending of three point eight nine million. Your equalized pupils, this is a draft from Michelle and Lori. We still, we're supposed to receive it statutorily by Friday. We still haven't received it from the agency, what the equalized pupils are, and we won't for a little while. So it's, we, we're, and their estimates are really good. Is nine, a hundred ninety-four point five nine, or an increase of point seven eight equalized pupils. I would have you just look across that row, you can see what's happening in other schools.
Yeah, rough.
Okay? The, the, I can tell you, the district population, in the next five years, we're projected to get down to a little over thirteen hundred, and we're just below fifteen hundred right now. We're dropping. So you can see that your cost per equalized pupil is nineteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-four with draft one. You'll see that you're above the threshold, black is for above the threshold, that's the next one. If it's red, it means you're, you're exceeding the threshold. I should say below the threshold, thank you. Alicia, below the threshold of a hundred and ninety-two thousand. You'll see, anyone that's in red there is above the threshold. Doty's draft two became below, and Callis's draft two will become below Thursday night. Romney is not sure what they're gonna do.
I have a question about the threshold, the threshold, I thought it was like a set, like, dollar figure. It's not a set dollar figure.
It's a, there's costs, it's, it's a cost per equalized pupil piece, and it's an excess of a hundred thirty-two thou, a hundred thirty-two percent of the average cost. Set back, it, it, it's, it's, I'm really simplifying it. It started back in two thousand fifteen, they locked the threshold figure, and said it could grow via CPI. Set back, it, it, it's, it's, I'm really simplifying it, it started back in two thousand fifteen, they locked the threshold figure and said it could grow via C P I. The cost for ed, education spending in C P I is like two graphs like this. So it's getting greater as we go out because the cost of ed spending is going faster than the consumer price index. And so actually what that does is suppress, there's an inflation, there's a factor added to that two thousand fifteen state. Budget amount and then the hundred and twenty-three percent of that.
But, but that's not like a single figure for the entire state, like ninety thousand five hundred?
There is a, there's a single figure for the entire state.
Uh, so I'm just confused how Callis was eighteen thousand.
What happened was they, if you look before, they had revenues last year of a hundred and nine thousand. From offsetting revenues for, and they went down for their offsetting revenues to eighty-five. But you see they had fifty-three thousand dollars in federal grants where this year they have none. So they lost their Title One funding and they lost their small schools.
But I guess my question is, the local ed spending per equalized pupil, wouldn't it?
Is it lower than yours, yeah, I've gotta go, it has to go back to what you were at two thousand fifteen as a district.
Okay.
It's a rate of inflation growth rate too.
Okay.
So it's not just state, you gotta look at all those.
Okay.
For more details, I can get the format from Lori, but.
That's okay, I just was curious, I thought it was like straight up nineteen-five for every school, every.
So your tax rate for this year with C L A of two thousand seventeen was a dollar ninety. And looking at if it were a merged tax rate across the S U. One district, you can see how we have the district column in the right eye, I even talked about that, it would be a dollar seventy-nine. And if we applied your C L A from this past year to that, that means that the Eastmont Pillar tax rate would be a dollar eighty-seven. Or three cents lower by the merged tax rate. So down below, we have a line there, we'll have CLAs at the end of this month. But what the differential is by town for tax rates between the merge and their draft one budgets. One of the other things that I wanna tell you and give you warning about, Eastmont, uh, U thirty-two has their last bond payment. For their, one of their two bonds in next year's fiscal year, which is a four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. When that bond goes away, because it's allow, it, it, you guys know this very well, it's allowable expense, it doesn't go to your ed tax. So if we stayed level funded, not level service, level funded. In a merged tax rate, we will be a hundred thousand dol- you can see we're five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars below the threshold right now. We would be a hundred thousand dollars below it and the healthcare costs this past year at U thirty-two for this fiscal year budgeting. For the next year is a hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase just on its own. So I'm forecasting that as a merged district will be there, I will also tell you, people said, well, me- maybe that means the merger's not good. When I look at all the individual entities, if you look at how far you are away, thinking. Berlin might be the only district that wouldn't be in the penalty next year, thinking about salary increases and merge and healthcare increases for F Y twenty-one. So we're looking at the F Y twenty-one year being, either way, merged or not merged, having to look at some serious cuts around this S U. Because of the cost of, it's a human resource cost. And it's at, you know, when Steven was asking, how's someone a hundred thousand dollars? It's the benefits and the salary increases. So I just wanted to give you all that for context, the reason I do this is because I know in the transition board, someone's gonna be asking for this information, so I figured why not get it out early? So you guys can look at, I'm not sitting here advocating for the same amount of dollars, you know, per equalized pupil at every building. But I want people, y- you, you can't have the discussion about what do students need without knowing what are the dollars behind it? Because then we could go get the student performance data that you guys do a great job of looking at for Eastmont Pillar, but looking at that for all the schools. And what's it look like for the student needs in every school, cause that's different as well.
So what, what you said about the U thirty-two bond hypothetically, I mean, I know you said. We have a hundred dot thirty thousand dollars healthcare increase.
Yeah.
But. We would potentially decrease taxes by three hundred thousand for the district if we.
They have been planning that once that bond went away and they've been managing their capital fund, they need that money in their capital fund. Cause all their ERVs right now are failing on the roof, they're twenty years old. And they've been taking care of it with their capital fund, but the plan is for that to go into the capital fund instead of. Having a bond, but now it's not money and Ruben, you, I'm gonna stop you from doing it, cause you'll do it for me, is, it's good fiscal planning. But it's pen- you, it counts against your local, your, your spending per equalized pupil. Where before, when it was bonded, it didn't count against your spending per equalized pupil.
So planning ahead is, is a bad.
No, planning ahead is fiscally responsible, but irresponsible from a tax perspective.
Right, right.
Because our legislature doesn't understand fiscal planning.
Right, so this is all, just so you have this knowing. I, I mean, I heard the executive board pretty loudly in, in August when they said, just put the budgets together separately. And I give you, you know, one of the questions is, you know, someone said, someone, one of your fellow board members said, well, I assumed that everyone would have the same cost. Get the same amount of money per equalized pupil and I said, well, I think there's a question before you say that. Should everybody or should not? What's that do for what you're trying to do for kids?
Well, that's, it's like I, I'm asking the same question to the governor, you know, like when they were saying, you know, they're gonna give thirteen thousand. If, if we don't want it at that level, why would we want it at this level?
Uh, I, I think the sh- the answer is that only if all of the other factors are equal, would we be able to take equal money.
Yeah, so I, I just, I was saying to the, I've been saying this to all the boards, I just finished a paper that I wrote about two or three weeks ago about what's the. The, some of the highest factors in student success in rural super, with rural superintendent leadership. And it's, and from the district level, what's really astounding is that there's very little research on rural superintendencies in rural districts. Most of it's on suburban and urban, but what's.
Easier to study.
Uh, it's, well, it is easier to study in some regards, sometimes it's easier to study the, the rural actually too. But what it is, is that, that's not usually where the money is to support the studies. Um, but there's four main factors and the first one is being focused on student achievement. The second one is being willing to put the resources where the student need is. And not necessarily saying all things are equal.
So to go back to this budget.
Yeah.
Just, this is my summary of what I heard in this presentation. Suggests we should be fiscally conservative. And really be super mindful of adding positions, cause they're likely gonna have to be cut in a year or two.
That's what I'm telling you. I'm telling you that in a year, we're gonna be looking, and Addison Central went through this, I mean, it was. Cause they, they either, they decide, are we gonna just try to cut a little bit every year or restructure?
As much as I don't like looking at it from a political angle. If we're looking at a three cent tax decrease, which I would like to just make note is vastly different than what the alarmists in certain districts and. Supervisory union have been howling about for the past three years-ish. Not that that drives me at all off a deep end.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Flor.
Mindfulness, you know, we all need more time with, we're not there yet.
I would be very mindful about feeling too comfortable about the fact that our tax rate is potentially going down. Um, and. I would encourage us to be real mindful of the optics of spending more. You know, if.
I'm kind of in Steven's spot, I'm not spending.
Yeah, and I'm, you know, I heard your presentation and I do understand that, but I'm seeing that, I know that you say yellow doesn't necessarily mean good, but. In guidance, we are low across the, across the district. And if I subtract, I know that you said one fifty-two might not be low, but if I subtract fifty thousand dollars, five hundred and thirteen. From our a hundred and fifty-two, a hundred sixty-one eh, below the threshold. We still are a hundred and one eh, thousand dollar, six hundred and forty-eight below, so, so I just, you know, I always say. You're, yeah, we, we, kids don't have a year to lose if, if we have to make a change in a year from, from now, but we at least get. The option to seeing if this sort of intervention will work and if we need the time. I, I will leave it up to, to Alicia and you to see.
Didn't we reduce guidance just a few years ago?
We did.
Only because we could, we shared with Callis.
Yeah.
We, we, we have tried the practice and it's worked very well of hiring together when we both have a right, we've done that. Uh, a number of times and it's worked very well, so a person can have a full-time position, um, we did, we went from a point eight.
That's what I thought.
Down to a point five.
And that's when Michael became the behavior person, isn't it?
Um, no, we went from a, that happened before Michael. And then we went down to a point six when Michael came and then we went.
That's when I remembered that it got reduced.
Yeah, it has been, um, and I think that the. With the intention behind that of being Michael would be here every day and could pick up and he has and he absolutely has and will continue to do that. It's just a different skill set.
And the, and the other thing to me is that to remember that my, part of what we, why we have Michael is so that Alicia can be the instructional leader and not the behavior. Police at school, so we can't forget that.
Pretty clear about that, yeah.
I mean, I, I love working with kids with their problems, I love that and I, I still do a piece of that, but that is, eh, that is not.
So what I mean is that that's not why we reduce eh, the counselor.
Well. Well, you know how I feel on the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we've also just spent time in the executive committee and at the full board, talking about priorities and priorities across the S U. And this is not a priority across the S U. Prior to course, the S U is increasing, decreasing the ma- gap in literacy and math and increasing the performance.
But how are students supposed to, to achieve what they're supposed to achieve if they're not ready to learn, so.
This is a means to that.
Yeah, I would hear that, I would hear this.
To me, it's too much of a trickle-down economy theory.
Same word.
I wanna see more direct.
Instruction.
There's all kinds of things we could do that would put the students in a better frame to learn more.
Well, I think the course.
But are we doing everything we can do? That is very clear around improving what students can do and in, in decreasing the gap? But I'll just be quiet, I'm not.
No idea.
I, I'm not gonna try to sway anybody, everyone knows where I stand. And, and it's even more so, cause there may be some services free to us by playing field, so why do we wanna spend any money if something free?
With people skilled.
Or let's see how much.
But that's, but that's social, yeah. We've been here, confusing, but sorry.
On my mind, for multiple years, has been getting us from the top ten in the state per pupil spending. Down to a reasonable level and we're getting closer and closer to doing that. For the first year and a number of years, we're not battling the threshold or being real cautious of the threshold. In my mind, that's a good thing and I don't wanna start saying, okay, we're well above it now, so we can be more generous. We fought hard to get where we're gonna get, it's not gonna get any easier in the years ahead. And I, I'm just adamant about not digging us another hole this year. That we're gonna find ourselves cutting programs next year to pay for the budget or cutting a classroom teacher and increasing classroom size.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, I guess I do have a fear of the playing field thing falling through and. Um, and then, cause I, I mean, I spend a good portion of time here and I, I see. That there could be, you know, I s- I see people working with some kids and. I can see where there could be help and need, needed and, and used. But with that being said. Are there, are there, are we looking everywhere that we could for some of these grants and s- and fun, funding, I mean, is there, whose responsibility would it be to kind of?
Our income level doesn't really open us up for grants, school grants.
Eastmont Pillar, I'm sorry, but the community here, Lindy's exactly right.
We aren't poverty.
You're, yeah, you're not.
Well, but you see what I'm saying, like, so we're, hopefully the playing field thing comes through, but what if it doesn't and we, we'd see the need, like, I mean.
It's the same need that we've been seeing growing. This is not a new need.
Right.
This need didn't pop up this year.
Agreed.
Right, so. While I totally understand the need on every level, I, you know, anecdotally, experientially. We all know those kids that, that need more. Um, and on a human level, I would love nothing more than to give every child everything that they need. Right, I mean, that's, that's, but. I think given. The realities of where we find ourselves, all of the different pieces of it. Right, the, I think. We're, we're pretty far into this budgeting cycle and there are a lot of unknowns, there are a lot of questions, there's a lot of unease and uncertainty. And I think adding new spending from a timing perspective now would be, um, I don't think it would be a bad idea.
One of the things I was gonna say was I also don't wanna add back more mad blood, which I think is what you were kind of alluding to earlier.
Yeah.
So.
I needed to let you guys talk it out. That I asked Alicia and I to pull out and so if you need it, cause, no, you have to decide where you are as a board, you heard our information. You need to decide where you are as a board, that's one of my governance theories, you guys have heard it from me before, you speak as a board. So you need to decide that, um, and talk about where you're at, so.
I realize we're looking forward, we're not backwards, but we used to have a group home in town. And we had some real needs in the school with lots of Washington County mental health people in the school. And I realize our society's gotten worse because of where I work and see, but I just, I'm not comfortable with more manpower. I think the course you're offering is a great step for helping the staff deal with what is coming down the pike and what we are seeing. I think it's a great organization, he's gonna do a great job with the course and understanding is so important for the professionals.
I would go farther, I think it's, the, the understanding is important for the taxpayers too. Like, I, I don't, I don't think, I think people, we tend to get comfortable in our view of Vermont being this idyllic place that doesn't really have problems.
Well, read the paper, yeah, I mean, but I, you just can't let people who don't work in schools understand what's really going on in the schools, I don't think. My world, or our world in schools is just, I didn't know till I was a teacher. That children were hungry, that children were beaten, that children wore these things, cause my parents shielded me from that. But then when you're a teacher and you're making sure your drawer is full of wheat thins and crackers and things that you can. Make sure they're fed, we have better food services now than they did when I started, but it's. You don't see it, you don't see it.
Did you wanna say something, Flor?
Well, I did, I, I think I said my, my, my share, I think that kids spend, you know, I don't know, eighty percent of the time outside school, they don't spend all of their time. In, in school and the, the skills that they gain from the guidance counselor are. And, and it's that community, I see the playing field thing happening as more of a healthcare and other thing like a. Like an on-the-side kind of thing, but anything that we can do, well, we have them here, that's all we have, when we have them here, then they're, they're out. They're, they're out of, so we have those, whatever it is, eight hours, six hours to like really try to make a difference and make that connection. With the parent if possible and I think what the course that they were gonna be doing with they will be, you know, great, great resources and, you know, maybe. Teachers being able to do home visits like the kindergarten teachers do or, or something, but. I, I, I just always feel like kids can, can wait, the income inequality is not getting any better in this country right now. So there's very little social mobility and we recognize that as a, as, as that community, we can do better, so if we, that's the best we can do here and. So, but I know that we have to deliver more with less. But it, it seems to me that even if it's just adding, you know, three more hours or maybe it's not point five or point twenty-five, I don't, I don't, I, I don't know. I would, I would like to see, eh, eh, as, as long as we understand that this impacts our achievement gap, that we stop kidding ourselves that this doesn't impact, this impacts our achievement gap. Considerably and so that's, I had my say.
And I would, I would actually add to that and say, like, while I support the teachers getting that education, I think it's great. The more we rely on teachers to to handle.
Yeah. Ninety percent of what their kids need.
Ninety percent of what their kids need, the less uh instructional time they might have for it as well. I don't wanna add to the budget either, I either, I I just wanna like.
I, so it's, it's my point, I'd like to bring us back to that. We've talked about it for a long time and provide guidance if we wanna add it or not add it.
I'm hearing a pretty clear consensus. Don't wanna add it at this time, and if anybody is.
I I I do not feel that, sorry to say that.
I'm not hearing unanimity.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah.
I'll clarify my statement that I don't, it's not a wish to just blindly raise taxes or raise raise money. But I also wanna be very conscious about making decisions for the kids, which is.
Yeah, and I also want the our administrators to know that if we're sending them to explore things and look at data and look at what might be needed, that that we have some flexibility, right? So if if we're sent, if, cause otherwise we should just say, you know, I I don't know what we would say, just eh go off and explore, but you know, this is a command without eh, like they do at the legislation, right? They, this is what you need to do, but there's no resources, so if I'm sending you out, I wanna say that there's some flexibility.
But I think this goes back to our discussions around priorities.
Yeah.
Um, and and I understand that there's, there's legal room in these priorities and and there's a lot of interpretation that has to happen. And that's a little bit by design as well, right, that's so that you as administrators can interpret our priorities and execute them in the way that you as professionals, which we're not, see best. So I even though it's a little bit of a, there's a long tail on it, I I I actually think that what we're doing with the priorities work is really important because it gives that really long-term, this is the thing that we're aiming for. And if we wanna adjust that by a couple of degrees over time to make room for more social services because we've decided that that's a priority, I think that's a healthy conversation to have as a board. Either this board, probably not at this particular time, um, or as a full board. And this conversation, I think, may look really different in a unified board. Because instead of trying to solve this on a per-school system, on a per-school building basis, we would be talking about it on a school district basis and I think that's really important.
But if we are not identifying the need here, you know, like how.
Well, I think it'll follow, I think it'll work its way down.
Yeah, the work is not going to stop, we we need to know how to serve these children.
A clear direct, a clear direction what they need, I think, I think that'll be helpful anyways.
So even though this may not be the answer from the board that you want, I I'm glad that you brought it forward, I think this is an important viewpoint and perspective and um, uh, conversation to have.
And I think this was a a great conversation for me to hear be and for you to have because it is this is our current state and it's not just the Eastmont Pillars, it's in, it's in all of the schools.
Okay.
Thank you.
So. Some sort of time, that was a good long time on that.
Do we need a motion or did administrators understand our?
No, what I just tell you, the next steps with the budget is that we've heard your direction and we'll be taking it to the transition board. So that's the last of coming back to you for budget.
What's another, can I, I've been trying to get us on task all the time. We approve this budget?
No, you don't.
Okay.
You don't have authority to do that anymore.
But, so this budget gets approved.
Yep.
There's nothing to say that all kinds of things couldn't change.
They, that's right, all kinds of things.
Even if we put in fifty thousand dollars for something, it may not happen, that fifty thousand dollars could be used for something else.
Correct.
So.
Either way.
Yet another reason not to put it in.
Okay.
Okay.
Three point two, Act forty-six update.
Yep, so, um, there's a couple of things here that I need to talk to you about and Flor can talk to you about the articles. You'll need to think about your transition board membership, the articles have changed so that if you wanna have someone else besides the clerk and the chair, uh, you can so appoint them for that. I would tell you that the town, right, as I just talked to you about the budget process and what the executive committee the, as you saw in my email from last week, we had to repost the warning, so that's now on January fourteenth. I believe that the transition board will be busy the first two to three weeks on uh getting ready for an election and articles of agreement election, so I think they'll probably start the budget conversations in late January, beginning of February, um, with what I've been plotting out literally today. The town, so there's work for them to do, if you remember, the transition board has three responsibilities. One, to set up a, if there's, if an articles of agreement co- committee comes back with amended articles, they must warn them, they don't get to choose whether they go or not, that the committee has that power. The, um, they set up a process for elections of a new unified merge board and they recommend a budget to the merge, new merge board. They don't approve it, but they recommend one to the new board, the new board then takes that approved budget. It takes that budget, does what they want and then recommends that to the electorate of all five towns.
So it's just the budget that gets gets to the electorate, the electorate, the electorate.
Well, the electorate, uh, elects the board members as well, they, yeah, basically. We're gonna talk about, articles are, there's a lot more I learned today about articles, so there's a lot to go with articles, uh, which I really don't wanna get into all the detail on articles in this meeting. But there will be, um, cause we could be there for an hour or two right now. The town, uh, I I also put town reports on here, I'm just trying to give you this information and then I'd like some feedback and what you think. The town reports, um, I made a decision about a week ago that the town reports that will be in the town report, that sounds really redundant. The school report that's in the town report, how about that? Will, will focus on what's happened this year and last fiscal year, so we always give at least a statement about the audit. But if you remember, about three quarters of that town report was, um, was information for the new budget. We don't have that yet. And if we were to have, some, some of your fellow boards have asked about, well, wouldn't you put it in there if there was a injunction and we had to vote on a local budget, we're already past the time right now to be ready for town meeting if we were gonna run election, approve budgets the way we've always done it. We still need a special, we now need a special meeting if we were to have six different districts, so we're not we're off the town meeting timeline for budgets, already three weeks, you know, we've done three weeks of difference, we're in the third week of it. And so we can't go back, we can't be ready for town meeting because everything has to be ready to go to print about January tenth. So, things that would be in your town report would be the board chairs report, the principals report. Um, some, I can't remember for Eastmont Pillar without looking at the sheet. Eastmont Pillar, I think, does salaries, yes, salaries on U thirty-two, Washington Central and E M S and then the independent auditors report, so those would be the only things that are in your school report section of your town report this year, there wouldn't be a whole bunch on the there would also still need to be elections for the local board because this board has authority over operations to June thirtieth. And then there would be one more meeting of that board to accept the audit and dissolve the board.
So we should. Run.
Yes, I'm asking you all to run because we need you to run to fill out the, you're, you're running, you have the authority right now over local, over uh, local board, over the local operation right now, all the way to June thirtieth, so you know, what does that mean, we need, if I was gonna get to be a minimalist, the minimalist is
The audit.
No, you really need to approve board orders and if we have a, either a staff or a student hearing. Okay? Um, so that's.
Need to do your petitions.
Yeah, and.
You you still do the same process, it's you and Stephen.
It's you and Steve.
We'll, we'll get out more, I'm gonna get out a lot more information and information out to the public, um, I sent out, or not, I didn't send it out, but Krista sent out at about five o'clock tonight, the first of a series of videos that are going out around Act forty-six. I filmed it this weekend and it's all ready to go up on YouTube, it's about thirteen minutes if you wanna listen to Bill. Just to update on where we are with Act forty-six and I'm gonna try to do it every week.
I think that's really important, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Cause I think people are trying to figure out timelines, what's really going on.
Right, and what I, what I'm saying there, what you can say to folks is it's literally changing week.
So is the expectation that at town meeting, people are gonna like?
They're gonna elect two different boards, they're gonna elect, there are actually three different boards, there'll be a U thirty-two election, there'll be an Eastmont Pillar and then there'll be a Washington Central Unified Union School District Board.
And is that, that one? Is that, are we voting for people from all five towns?
You vote from all, you elect two representatives from all five towns.
Yeah.
So if you sit here in Eastmont Pillar, you'll, you'll vote for your two folks from Eastmont Pillar?
Wait, it's not proportional to?
Nope, and two for Berlin and two for Callis and two for Worcester and two for Middlesex. And there will be ten, hopefully.
And five for Eastmont Pillar, through next, or two.
Through, through December two thousand nineteen. And then, and the budget vote, you had a preliminary date for May thirtieth?
Uh, June, April, actually, April thirtieth, I've got for you right now.
Sorry, April thirtieth, yeah.
I have, uh, here's a timeline.
Updated it?
It's updated, I'd like the extras that are there back, but, um. This is getting updated all the time.
A little bit of an oddball question.
Sure.
If there was a member of this board who wanted, who wanted to run, I I don't know. Imagine one of you who's up for election also wanted to run for the
Merge board?
Merge board.
They can do that, they can do that.
Yeah.
And anybody else could run.
I think in the next, I think probably somewhere in like the first or second week of January, I'm gonna give a whole thing about boards and running and elections and all of that. But frankly, I know I'm just not there yet and it, because there's so many questions that I don't have answers to that, and I'm meeting with the town clerks on Thursday, I'm buying them all lunch and saying, hey, let's sit here and figure this out.
Okay, so, sorry, one more question, so the transitional board would run from now until town meeting?
Well, or until when the board seats, because there's actually some quite, one of the things I just, I don't want you to get, I don't want you to put a date.
I don't want an exact date, I just wanna.
That's what I'm saying, and I don't want you to even put like a town meeting on it because things could move.
But it's prior to July first or Ju-
That's right, somewhere there, there'll be a new board.
Somewhere, so maximum of the transition board is till July, whenever that date is.
Yeah, that would be really late, Ju- Ju- June thirtieth, but I don't think we'll get there.
Well, but that's what I'm just.
Please, no.
You just never know.
But that, I mean, that's the thing, it 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 is moving.
It's changing, yeah.
Changes all the time. So that's, um, what I have for you, Flor, you've been in a lot of it, so what did I miss, what more do you wanna highlight?
Missed anything, except we, we're having a meeting on Wednesday on Articles of Agreement, we're still waiting for a draft from the lawyer, we we have to form a seven oh six, uh, proportional Act forty-nine committee, sort of like the seven oh six B to write the Articles of Agreement and eh, I know there's new information, but we're still hoping to have a hearing eh and have a vote.
Yeah, the nice thing is that that can actually go going forward before the transition board, so you'll see the dates on here. I actually was able to, because of the warning mistake that I made, that I was able to kind of flip-flop them and still get everything done. I mean, there are, there are a couple of other meetings that aren't on here that are in my, I have a paper calendar now going in my office that has all the way to June and there's some, especially in the first two or three weeks of June, there's almost something going on every night.
And and Bill, you had, I I thought we had talked about January third or seven?
Yeah, I think I wrote it wrong on here. I, yeah, I think you'll even see I spelled first wrong on here.
Yeah, cause I, I thought January.
This is how, I mean, this is, this is literally moving.
Okay.
What you saw in email, I haven't up, I've updated this on Friday, I emailed you yesterday, Flor, for those dates.
And I think I checked this and I can't remember, the Articles of Agreement meeting that long, when the minutes are on the website?
Not yet, I think, oh, no, yes, they are, they are, they are, they are.
I looked and now I can't remember what I saw.
They are, we we have one eh, one article to to do a second reading and the rest, I think we I feel pretty comfortable, I think we did a good job.
Go back to, but.
Yeah, yeah.
So those minutes would include the articles?
Yeah.
What, okay.
The articles are not up there.
But you can get it from what's in the minutes when they've talked about how they wanted to adjust them.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then there's a, a lot of community and I think the main thing, uh, these for me for the articles is gonna be the around community engagement in making sure that people understand that if you vote no in the Articles of Agreement, it's not voting no against consolidation, but it's voting no and we end up with the draft Articles of Agreement, not what, with what we drafted.
I think that's gonna be super important.
So it's, that is, that is gonna be super important in this very narrow timeframe that we, that we have.
Really complex.
Yeah.
That, that, it's much more complex.
And I'm afraid that's where the rumors and the what people in the past, we've had people throwing out numbers and throwing out things that were not accurate and it's the loudest ones that people hear and remember, so that's why I think your YouTube idea of constant what's real is really important, hopefully people pay attention.
Yeah, and I, I. The only fear I have been, uh, drives people to click on something and watch, we, I mean, we, I think, need to really speak our to as many people as we can.
Yeah, yeah, and and I think even people that have been very vocal against Act forty-six are much rather have the new, you know, the amended Articles of Agreement, that Articles of Agreement, so as far as I understand, they have pledged to help, so that should that should, that should help.
Because I think we've heard from the same handfuls of people and people who may be questions or, fine with me, aren't the people we hear from. And that's where I worry about the loudest voices, making people believe something different is happening than maybe, yeah. I appreciate the public notices that you're making or I haven't seen one, so.
Tell me how I did, I made it screencastify, some of them I'm just gonna do with my phone early, say I'm gonna talk to you about a couple of things that are going on here, here's and throw it up there.
Okay.
Cause people are pretty forgiving with videos these days.
Are we gonna put them on Front Porch Forum?
Uh, they're up on our, they're going up on our social media sites, so the problem with Front Porch Forum is after I do two a month.
Oh, yeah.
I start getting charged and it's not cheap.
Yeah, yeah, no, if an individual does it, you don't get charged.
Yeah.
It's just a citizen posted on Front Porch Forum.
Was that a true spin of it?
Or just re, put something up there, you might wanna look at.
They want the public to pay for it.
Yeah, yeah, but and I could add the link, we, Edie and I drafted a really long post that I shared with you on, for the the signpost, I haven't put it up in Front Porch Forum yet because I have to wait for it to be released in the signpost, so I don't like take the floor and we edited another one that is much smaller, but I wanted to clear some more dates before, cause that one was so specific, so I might need to take.
Far out with dates right now, it's just too far, it's, we have to think of other ways of communicating, if we have to wait three mon- if we have to publish something now for a date, say a date now, that something's gonna be published in two weeks, it's, it's too much of a gap because these things keep moving on me, I can't nail them down.
But I I guess what we were trying to communicate and this is the importance of attorney eh of attending that first eh hearing of the, you know, that that organizational meeting is really important for the community to to be there.
It's the January fourteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Jan.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
The articles will be, I'm trying to keep the articles on the ninth.
That's when you are, you know, deciding that you're voting, you know, by a straight and valid, you, that's where you're like really organizing or organizing, that's why it's the organizational meeting, so it would be really important to reach out to everybody and
So which one do we want the public to be at, both or the fourteenth most important?
It's either one, one maybe will be the ninth will be the hearing for the new articles, where there'll be feedback given and then. Where there'll be feedback given, and then on the fourteenth is the organizational meeting where it's, it's held like a town meeting for all five towns.
And the hearing, the new articles, the ninth is gonna be at U thirty-two as well?
So will we even have a school meeting at town meeting?
You will need to have a school meeting. You will need to present a warning. I'm not sure what your warning is besides your, besides your elections. I'm still working on what that warning should be.
Yeah, because they'll show our kit video, you're like, be present for question, there's gonna be lots of questions about where we're going and. You're going.
I'll book it right now.
One thing it, it just made me think of, I've seen Kari's postings about the budget and just something you might wanna think about. I'll put something in this week's newsletter, just that, eh, you know, where we're at, but that might be something you wanna. Post.
Wanna do that, bro?
I'm gonna put that in my calendar right now.
Nope, I'm still waiting for.
Okay. Um, so, we have gotten through three point two, um, future meeting schedule and content.
So this is something that I asked, uh, Verbin, that, let's put this on here, just so you could have a discussion as a board. I kind of already alluded to what you, the minimum responsibilities are, which are board orders and any hearings. Your meetings right now are, you know, you have a, there's a January scheduled for the third Monday, and then there's a carousel scheduled for February. Um, and then in March, there would be a reorganization of this board, and, um, I would assume it would stay at the same point. I know with my time with all the meetings for all, my focus needs for myself, needs to be on the merger, um, and doing all of that work. So I think you'll have Alicia here and not myself for most of the meetings. Um, I miss you guys, but I think I've gotta work on that to keep the focus, cause it's just, the project plan's getting pretty big. With, and the number of meetings between the different boards. I think the transition board's gonna be meeting weekly. And then we're gonna have negotiations and a couple other things going on, so, um. So I wasn't sure what you wanted to focus on for your meetings here, and, and where you wanna go with that. So that's why I was, I was keen with that kind of a question.
My, I think our four meetings are gonna become the way to communicate with the public about where we are. At every, you know, cause the most trans, the more transparent and information that we give them, the better that will be. So maybe not, we already are gonna have a, eh, oh, no, it's not, it's the fifteenth. You say we had a January third meeting? January third is, third week, yeah, the fifteenth, so that, that we have no conflict there, so. We, we might have to move it around to make sure that we use that time together to either talk about the Articles of Agreement. Or do some kind of community.
Maybe it's largely Act forty-six update.
Yeah.
Borders.
Yep.
And I'll continue to just pr, share principals' reports as I've been doing, and keep you apprised of what's happening.
And I think I covered kinda three, four. I don't know why I made two pieces there for you.
Okay. Um, I'd.
I think I just wanted to make sure that everyone was clear what the local board timeline was for responsibilities, and I told you already about June to June thirtieth, and.
That brings us to page nine, administrative, administration report. Tell you.
I have a question.
In my house, funny, Lacey came home from when the governor was here, and she was like, he doesn't even know how to code.
That is true. He learned a lot that day, and he was very engaged.
It's just cute.
Are, are we going in order of reports, or can we ask questions with any reports?
Ask him, ask away.
I have a question on the pledging of alliance. Pledge of allegiance, sorry, getting grew up doing that. So I'm, I'm assuming that there would be some provision, for example, for a sixth grader. Or if there's a kid that doesn't wanna do it, that doesn't need to do it, or?
No.
You always have a knocked out.
That, yeah, you don't need, yeah.
They don't, okay.
It's not mandatory.
It's not mandatory.
No, so it, it used to be something that happened here every day, and I think with cons, honestly, I think with construction and when the flags left the gym. And it kind of just, I don't know what happened after that, it kind of, some classrooms still do it and practice it most days. Um, we have a very, and they're actually here tonight, a very vibrant Cub Scouts and Girl Scouts who take it very seriously. And, um, a lot of members that are students here. Um, so what's gonna happen on January second, when we come back, the first day back, we're gonna have an all-school assembly. And our Cub Scouts are gonna do, um, lead us in a flag ceremony and, and kind of teach the whole student body, those who've not done it. Um, and we'll do it together as a whole school on that one day, which is what we used to do when I first started here.
You did?
You don't remember?
I don't remember, but.
We did. And some schools have, you know, never got out of the practice and still do it every day.
Yeah, as long as there's still room for, like, I could just see some.
Does the pledge still have the words under God in it?
Yeah, so it's just.
There's a whole group think piece to it that I am uncomfortable with.
But, I, I, I think it's, 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 it's good as long as there's room, if there's, you know, like, the protests that athletes are doing right now. As long as there is, I could see some, especially as they get older, that we would encourage that not discourage, you know, that are able to.
Not make them. So in, over the month of December, we purchased a number of books to do as weight allows. The history of the pledge, where it came from, how it originated, who wrote it, um, how it came to be into practice. Um, and so teachers have been reading it to their students and having discussions, so it's not like we're, we're just out of nowhere having this happen. They, they've had a month to kind of prepare and talk about it, and in the upper grades, that may be a topic of conversation. I haven't heard that it is. Um, and, um, you know, every class has its own personality, and the personality of this sixth grade class isn't such where I could see last year. Maybe it would have been much bigger issue. I mean, it's just, it's personalities, um, but if that, if that were to happen, it would be. It's, you know, it's all part of education and teaching them, and when they're out in public, you know, all of the games, my kids play varsity sports. And they sing the Star Spangled Banner, right, and Yousalou, and it's just, it's out there, it's, it's what happens. And, um, so I, I surveyed the staff to find out, where are you at, what, you know, and they, every classroom teacher said they want to bring it back. So I felt like that was something that we should bring back.
And do parents know about this, or is there gonna be a, other, anything other than?
What did you say?
I would suggest some outreach.
Yeah, so, eh, I don't know at the level of classroom teachers what they have, um, I can certainly share in this week's newsletter.
Suggest maybe doing that, yeah.
And the, um, so the Cub Scout group, which is quite a few of our parents are kind of involved in that piece. So there, it has gotten out there, but outreach is, yes, important. I thought you said outrage, not outrage.
Not what I meant at all. Okay.
Any other questions? I have a, I have a couple of things to share with you that aren't in here that I said I would share, but. I'll wait to see if there's any questions first.
What is the Life is Good Kids Foundation?
So it's, it is, um, it's actually a, a part of the Life is Good, like the.
Those T-shirts.
Right, except there's a whole educational side of it that works with children in, in trauma.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and we had a couple of our teachers who participated in a training down there out in Boston. Um, and they went to a training over the summer and felt like it was incredible. They brought a lot back to us as a staff this year. Um, little things that you can put into practice in your classroom. So one example is, um, so it was Beth Parker and Jillian Zalinga who went down. There's something called News Ball, you know, in, in morning meeting, you do sharing and kids can share, and for some kids, they wanna share. And other kids, it's like the worst thing in the world and, and do not want to participate at all. So this is, this is called News Ball, and you have a ball and you can toss it. Um, but before you share, another anxiety-producing thing for children and adults is not knowing the reaction someone's gonna give you. Right, like you may say something and you think it's great, and they have a horrible reaction or the opposite. So before sharing your piece of news, you say, I'm gonna share something with you, and I'd like you all to react by saying, oh, wow, or go team, or whatever. So, so you aren't gonna be surprised by the reaction. Um, is something we've been doing in, in classrooms as part of morning meeting, um, s, in it, just periodically, in some classes do it more than. So, you know, it's my turn for the ball, and I have something really exciting to share, and I want you all to be really excited with me, so I'm gonna tell you. Or I, you know, have some really sad news, and I want you to say, I'm really sorry, or whatever it is, um, or give a hooray, my team won the game last night. Um, so little things like that, that just help us to be aware of kids and the pressures that we may put on them, what we don't even recognize. Um, so anyway, they're coming here, two of the, the people from the foundation are coming here in January to do some more training with our staff. Similar to what they got, um, Jillian and Beth got, and we have, um, Kelly Bushy and our, um, school psychologist. And the person who is leading the alternative program at U thirty-two are gonna join us for that also.
That's great, thank you.
Fiscal report?
I have one more. So I had said in the, the grounds, the, um, the quotes for the, we had talked about last month. The actual quote came in today for, um, from Goslin, which is the concrete.
Change that word to the estimate.
Estimate.
An estimate, we have, we have two estimates. Um, so there's a huge range in price, um, the, the price of concrete is forty-five thousand, which, nine hundred dollars. Um, which is basically taking out that steel edging that is getting caught up in everything and is sticking out in the hazard. Um, and then pouring the sidewalk. Two, we have a, an estimate, um, for just putting down. Um, taking out the steel, um, putting some crushed gravel in, and then putting some asphalt on top. Which is, um, there's kind of two, two sections, we had them do it into two sections, one section was six thousand two hundred dollars, and one was sixty-eight hundred. So thirteen thousand for the whole thing to pave.
Versus a hundred and forty-five thousand or something?
No, forty-five, almost forty-six thousand. Um, so.
How often would we have to repave those?
Uh, I can tell you, we paved the basketball court nine years ago, and we've never done it again. We've done nothing to it, so. Uh, it's, it's not a high traffic.
Yeah.
Um, it's more of a safety really, and to actually have the sidewalk there, because it's not right now. Um, so those are, I, I will obviously not go do anything more with this concrete.
I hesitate to even ask this, but if we pave, are we gonna be compelled to like create a paved ramp around the stairs?
No, no.
No, the stairs are okay. The stairs, for some reason, meet.
It's just not gonna like change the classification of the ingress path or anything like that?
It's, it is, and we do use that escape path every single day. I mean, it is something that.
I wanna make sure that.
So I can't say that to you for a hundred percent?
For like ADA?
I'm pretty sure it's.
ADA changes, it, the, the way it's being interpreted is starting to change, so I can't tell you that for a hundred percent. I agree with what Alicia's saying and what Flor's saying, but I can't say that to you with no cert, without any certainty.
So then we need to just be aware that at some point after we do this, we may find ourselves having to put a paved ramp around the stairs.
You might. I don't think, I think the risk is very small, but I will tell you that we've had some things changed just in this past six months. At other buildings.
That's, that's why I asked the question.
And then went back and it isn't. So I wanna say that it's interpretation.
Yep.
Of regulation.
Okay.
So who would interpret that?
The architect or the engineer. Yeah, but we could call, yeah, Glenn review this exit path, yeah.
I think that applies to everything we do. We act as best we can on current practices.
And we're not doing anything new.
Be mindful that something may change, but the best information we have in front of us is, it's not likely to.
Yeah, yes. And we're, we're not putting in something new, we're replacing existing material, so.
So it's short of a guarantee, Verbin, but it's.
Understood. No, I wasn't asking for a guarantee, I just wanted to make sure that we were thinking about it.
The way you worded it, you were, so I'm not gonna give you one.
Okay, fair, fair. I just wanted us to be thinking about it, because it's, as we've experienced, the no-good deed goes unpunished. Before.
Yeah.
I can tell you the current practice, what Todd does, because he can't get the snow blower on the stairs, he shovels the stairs. And he has this like little path on the, on the grass that, if you can't go down the steps, that you just go onto the grass that's also plowed.
Thank you.
He snowblows the rocks.
Yeah, hangs them against the windows and they break, and they're expensive to fix, but I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fiscal report?
So there hasn't been much of a change here, cause we're running the budget. Um, I did, um. I mean, there, you haven't seen any updates since September, we haven't really, we had just, uh, open enrollment for benefits, so we'll know that hopefully for January. But Lori is really, uh, she and her staff are really scrambling right now with a lot of work that they have to do. Not only with the Act forty-six, but all the new fiscal accounting system, we have to move, accounting codes have to change, and the new fiscal software system. I did wanna point out something on page sixteen to you, though. And one of the things that we've learned in the past few weeks in the Act forty-six is any fund that's been designated by the, by the voters. Or given to as kind of, uh, like the Jonathan Miller Fund, that has a purposely given as endowed. That moving into a new organization, they must stay with the same intent. So like the capital fund that is put, money's been put aside for this building, that would stay for East Montpelier. The, unless the, unless the new board went to the electorate and asked them to repurpose the funds, which they could do. They could say that electorate, the electorate could say those funds, um, but you, it is assumed by our attorney and reading. And the way they've worked with other voluntary mergers is that those funds stay for the purpose, and they're, the first ones drawn down.
A piece of good news. The only other thing on the front page of that page fifteen is the reduction in the music teacher is not in here, so you will see that.
So there may be moving of funds in June that you wanna do at that point, but, um. And, uh, um, meal service hasn't been, Lori and her crew are just, they're, we're been paying extra hours, so. If you need something that we're not giving you, please let us know. But it's not like we're mismanaging or anything else, it's just like, it's not. There hasn't been many items in note.
Executive Committee?
I think it's fair to say the last full board dealt with what the executive committee's been dealing with. Truly been focused on that student learning, um, so unless there's questions. I think what we presented at the full board was exactly what has been the workings.
Policy Committee?
We haven't met since the, um, full board meeting, and I reported then that we can't agree on our charge as a committee. So, um, we have to bring it up again. In this last meeting, we didn't have a quorum.
So, like, sorry, not necessarily related to this committee, but just in general, what happens? Well, we still have, still have committees?
It depends on the new board. I'm gonna recommend, I've got three I wanna recommend. Um, but I.
There's gonna be what, ten?
Ten members.
Ten members, and then, okay.
But I, I did see that you looked at that student freedom of expression policy and.
We didn't have quorum to do.
Oh, so you did, it was just on your agenda, and you looked at it, but didn't get to it?
But we couldn't take any action because there were only three of us there.
That, we take that, we have that one anyway. We have to follow it anyway, whether they take action or the board takes action, by the way the law.
Yeah. Right. Right. Nobody had a problem with it, that we're talking about it. And I explained that it was from BSBA and it, we just needed to revisit it.
Yeah. Yeah, that was something that was brought up to our attention to make sure that.
Yeah. So we had it, so.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn.
Mm-hmm.
Four point six negotiations.
Steven, poor guy.
Do you want?
Been working on one item, which is.
Yeah, so um, there's a, as in years past, there's a statement that goes out after. Are you shaking your head?
No, go ahead, you're fine. No, I I don't remember what it is. It's not shaking your head.
It goes out after each meeting.
I know you're remembering it.
Um, and it's posted, but it's a general thing and and we've, we've talked about um, one item and we've kind of cleared up the um, uh, the the manner in which we're gonna conduct the meetings and and those kind of things. So um.
Ground rules are set.
Ground rules, thank you.
But this is just for one year, right?
So one year contract.
Okay. Believe, that brings us to the action agenda.
I am so sorry, I forgot to tell you something else. I knew there were two things.
Oh.
Too late, too late this week, so we moved on.
Gosh, I'm sorry. This is just to to get, to let you know. Um, and this is part of your, what your ongoing operations of the building. We have um, we have some babies coming this year. And so we have our PE teachers going to be going out on uh, family medical leave um, to have a baby. His, his significant other will be having a baby in April or around April. Um, so just know that that's coming and he's working on the paperwork now, but he's hoping to take some time off. And this doesn't go to you, but just to let you know, um, cause it's gonna go to the executive, um, special educators. We have um, Ashley Gilstead, our new special educator, is also going to be having a baby in April. Um, so it's nothing you need to do anything about, but just so you know, we have some babies coming.
Awesome.
And we'll be looking for some long-term subs. Sorry.
Good luck in the special ed field, cause there's such a shortage.
You weren't kidding.
Um, action agenda five point one, accept the audit report, which starts on.
It was sent via email.
It was emailed, it was emailed to you.
Thankful to not have one of those things hanging out.
Can, can the motion just be to accept the audit report? So I'll make a motion that we accept the audit report.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion, excuse me, any discussion of the audit report?
Could we just get clarification that there didn't seem to be any?
There were no recommendations or findings. There were some subtle suggestions that were already put in place.
But no, no finding, okay.
Nothing, no.
Further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the audit report, please say aye.
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 Opposed, abstain. Recommend approving the school quality committee recommendation for SU-wide goal related to student learning to the transition board.
I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
Do you have the agenda?
Oh, you don't.
Well, I do, I, I'm keeping on the agenda.
Okay, so the three, the the motion I made was exactly the wording under five point two.
Discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, abstain. Appoint representatives to the Articles of Agreement Committee.
So this is the one that's happening right now where we need one member.
Need one member?
Yeah, it was, this is a, um.
I thought that we.
I thought it was.
The five point five is the one where you need to have three.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, this is just re- cause the Articles of Agreement was supposed to finish by December third and they're still working.
Got it.
So it's just kinda like you're reaffirming your floor, floor being your representative.
And Flor, that's you?
Mm-hmm.
Would anybody like to?
I'll make a motion to appoint Flor to the Articles of Agreement Committee.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Just to continue what they're doing, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just have.
Further discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, abstain. Appoint members to the transition board.
So you need two members, the clerk and the, if you table this, the clerk and the chair are the default.
And forgive me, who's clerk?
I am.
Lindy.
Is this different than the next one down, or, I mean, cause we only have five people, so, just wondering.
Yes.
Yes.
I have a recommendation for someone that's not on the board for the next one.
Oh, the next one doesn't have to be board members?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I would cheerfully let somebody else have my spot.
Yeah.
On the transition board.
And I had, I had talked to you about it.
Right, um.
So Lindy, are you in, or does Steven wanna?
I don't wanna do it.
Oh.
You don't wanna do it? I was hoping that you would do it.
Well, thanks a lot.
Not because I, no, no, I want you to do it too, but I was, cause I thought that you would run for the board and and Steven is not gonna run.
I'm not up to run, oh.
What he had said. Oh, you don't wanna run?
I'm in, I'm not up for the regular, you mean, for the transition board?
No, for the unified board. Just because Bill had said that we were gonna meet once a week.
So if you're on this transition board, you can't run for the unified board?
You're absolutely not.
No, yeah, you can. Oh, yeah, you can, yeah. No, you can.
Oh, yeah, you can, yeah.
Yes.
I think, I, I think it may get, I mean, when I plot out all the work between now and first of March, I could see one or two weeks of not meeting, but I think it's gonna be almost every week, right?
But they'll be in the evenings, not like the.
Yeah, in the evenings, in the evenings.
Not articles where they were all day.
No, 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 they're evenings and I think they're, I'm hoping they're a couple hours. I hope that we can speed up the way we do work a little bit.
I would love to speed things up.
We need to.
Well, not exactly this process, but we had a chance three years ago to vote and we didn't.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, so I was, I thought as clerk, I was on it and I was okay to do that.
Yes.
Yes, okay, perfect. Okay.
Got it.
Great.
Dog sample.
Okay, um, so I have nominations for Flor and Lindy.
Lindy.
I don't actually have a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Flor and Lindy to the transition board.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All of those in favor of appointing Flor and Lindy, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, abstain. Thanks. Um, five point five, recommend membership for an Act forty-nine committee.
So I believe there's gonna be three meeting, at the most three meetings, possibly two, could be more than that, maybe I'm being hopeful. Um, for an Act forty-nine Articles of Agreement Committee.
Can you just explain what that means?
That means the, in order to ha- amend the draft, uh, to amend the Articles of Agreement given to Washington Central Unified Union Board, um, from the Agency of Education, you need to have, according to Act forty-nine, you need to have an Articles of Agreement Committee. It must be, um, it must have very similar configuration as a seven oh six B committee. I said at this SU board, I thought we could get away with six people on it. After reading Act forty-nine again and consulting with our attorney, I was given strong advice that you should have the makeup be proportional, which is what I sent in the email, that memo I sent last week. So there's three from Eastmont Pillar, three from Berlin, two from Calis and Middlesex and one from Worcester. So all the boards except for Berlin, I was able to catch them in time, so they're appointing the correct number of representatives. Uh, for Eastmont Pillar, since you need three, um, you can appoint who you'd like. U thirty-two will not have any representatives and Kari's been part of the subcommittee right now and I would recommend to you thinking about appointing Kari. I have not talked to him or asked him if he's interested in being on that, but I think he is.
I would agree.
I think that's a logical person to be on it.
Yeah, yeah.
What, so what do we do if we appoint him?
Cause he's Eastmont Pillar.
You can appoint him.
And he's not willing?
If he's not willing, then I would come back to you and ask for you to have a special meeting to appoint another person.
But he's been doing, basically what this committee will be doing is, is, is.
He seems involved, so I don't expect him to not be, I just.
Right.
This committee will be doing the, taking the recommendation for the committee that you voted before.
Yeah.
To continue the work on the Articles of Agreement.
So it's like a new Articles of Agreement Committee.
Yes, a proportional Articles of Agreement.
Proportionality to meet the legal standard so it can stand. And then this committee approves the articles to go to vote. The transition board has no authority over what the articles say.
Right.
So this committee, if, all the transition board is, uh, is empowered to do is to warn for the election of whether to approve the articles or not.
Okay. So is there anybody else, I'm assuming you would like to be there?
Yeah. And I was thinking that Lindy would wanna be on that, but now she's on the other one, so I didn't know what.
Is there anybody else who would be?
I think Darcy's just picked that straw, right?
I don't know, just.
That's fine, yeah.
I think it's gonna be hopefully two meetings, but it might be three.
Two meetings.
Who knows?
So I'm hearing Darcy, Flor and Kari.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Steve. And a second?
I'll second, but you, you second.
I'll second and Lindy.
Thank you. Um, is there any discussion of the article, sorry, Act forty-nine committee membership? Seeing none and hearing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. And when I would take a motion to approve the board orders.
I would make a motion to approve the board orders in the amount of twenty-two thousand, eight dollars and thirty-four cents.
I'm pretty sure I heard a second.
Five seconds.
I had actually wrote it down this time, so.
It's all prepared.
It was in front of me, so I just assumed I'd make the motion.
Um, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?